Just your picture.
Okay. That will be.
Need to see your face.
I'm trying to, I'm back on my iPad now, so I'm trying to go back and forth between the agenda and this.
You're right.
Pull up the agenda. You can pull up the agenda on your computer on the website if you want to.
Except I'm not near any of that, but I know what's on the agenda tonight. We're talking about Go Norman Bond Proposition Four, an update from EDAB that I have been looking forward to. I believe we have Chuck Thompson, a member of EDAB with us, and I think you've all had a chance to review the items in your packet, your virtual packet for this evening. And so with that, Brenda, I will turn it over to you. I'm not sure who the speaker is going to be, if it's going to be Chuck or someone else.
I'll jump in and start us off. We do have one of our co-chairs, Mr. Chuck Thompson, on with us. We'll go ahead and put the document up on the screen. The city clerk will roll over to that screen here in a flash. We took all of council comments at our study session on the subject. We think we've captured them all here. And honestly, the, the comments from council fit very well into the current draft. And we, in our follow-up discussion with EDAB, really only had one point of clarification. And that had to do with the understanding of council's desire not to be funding lobbying efforts. But the follow-up conversation led us to realize we have several local nonprofits that are in the business of advocacy. And that really kind of took most of our discussion at the end of last week with EDAB was, you know, how do we, how do we identify the lobbying versus the advocacy efforts to prevent from excluding several local nonprofits who may have not been able to qualify for any other funding? So our, our co-chair, Mr. Chuck Thompson, did send in a communication. I think we do have that as an attachment that just recognizes the, the delicacy of that particular line and our ability to not prevent several of our local nonprofits. We may have a nonprofit that advocates for foster care for our children. And, you know, how do you define their advocacy versus lobbying? So potentially the ability to say that these dollars could not be used for those lobbying efforts, but definitely love some of council, council's thoughts as it may relate to that concept. So the list is, it currently stands for eligible entities, locally owned and locally managed organizations based inside the city limits of Norman. Any entity not specifically listed as ineligible may apply. Fifty or fewer full-time employees for the current definition of small business. And where applicable, organizations must be up to date on all of their licensing through the city. And these funds could be used to help them get current with any of their licensing requirements. Organizations engaged in activities deemed legal in the state of Oklahoma would be eligible to apply. And for existing organizations to be eligible, they must have been in operation prior to March 13th, 2020. Organizations that were not in operation on that date will be considered a startup and may be eligible for other funding categories. So did want to recognize what we're seeing and hearing, even in our most recent conversations with the folks at United Way. The ability for those startup centers for daycare while schools are not in session, we think, could be mission critical in helping our community members get back to the workforce. So as we scroll up, our ineligible entities identified, churches or religious organizations, public or private schools, government entities, or elected official offices, financial institutions primarily engaged in lending, organizations that are engaged in political or lobbying activities. So that's the one we want to, we want to see if we need to tweak it to allow the advocacy of some of our local nonprofits. And then organizations with outstanding businesses related to liens, judgments, or pending bankruptcy proceedings, so that any proceeds from the program wouldn't automatically be consumed and distributed to debtors. Now, the current arena related to our ability to access those CARES Act dollars through the state of Oklahoma. As we drill down into that process, we recognize that our ability to create a revolving component with CARES Act money doesn't really exist. Any loan payment made back to the city's program winds up getting sent back to the U.S. Treasury. The good news is for the businesses who would be in receipt of proceeds from the program, it's obviously even better assistance if they don't have to pay those dollars back. Those dollars stay in our community and get circulated. So we think it could be a plus since we would not be the benefactors of any loan repayments if literally the program became a grant program. That's probably a little easier on the administration's side also. We don't have to worry about the repayment and who's late on their payments. And are we emailing statements or mailing statements? And then, you know, who is the fiduciary responsible for maintaining all of those account balances over time? So potentially the program just got much easier to administer. But first step is making sure we've captured council's vision for the Small Business Recovery Program in what we've captured on paper. So we know your priority consideration, minority-owned businesses, organizations that had restrictions on capacity during the healthier, healthier-at-home plan, or any future local ordinance. So depending on how long it takes for all of the proceeds to be exhausted. Organizations located in lower census, lower income census blocks, and we can determine that. Organizations that were not eligible or denied funding from other sources. Those are questions that will be confirmed through the underwriting process. Business with needs or startup business organizations that are starting up now because of COVID-19 and the highest priority, and we talked about whether or not that is the highest priority. Those entities that demonstrated the greatest negative impact. We talked about weighting, how, how these questions would be weighted in the application process and the elimination potentially of the highest priority. We could just simply say entities that demonstrate a negative financial impact related to the business resulting from COVID-19. So it does not have more weight than any of the other criteria. If there are any single criteria, or if there's a, a weighting in terms of, you know, maybe it's, it's five points for every box you can check on this list, but minority-owned entities may get 10 points. So we're talking about developing the scoring matrix that would be used in, in just ranking the applications as they come in. And our matrix is kind of the, we have a, a draft of what the matrix looks like. Our ability to weight it, all of these things could be weighted equally, or some of these items may be weighted more heavily based on council's wishes. So if you let that sink in, we'll go ahead and go, go through the funding programs and then come back to how you would like to weight those priority considerations. So we pared down the revolving loan program, which may not be a revolving loan program. If, if that's the direction we go by accessing those CARES Act dollars. But the top end here would be up to 125,000. The original draft talked to up to 250,000. The Small Business Nonprofit Recovery Loan Program for the smaller businesses at 10 or fewer employees, up to $25,000. And startups would be eligible to obtain funding through this program. The We Love Norman Recovery Grant, small businesses, five employees or less, nonprofits who have been negatively impacted, or sources of funding were, you know, like hotel bed tax type things would be eligible for these grant programs. And then the micro grant of up to $10,000. And recognizing we don't want you to apply for multiple categories all at once. And then the final component we identified is the Technical Assistance or Training Grant Program to help businesses modify their current practice to be able to excel and grow in a COVID-19 environment. So maybe it's more online presence, more home delivery opportunities, you know, better catalog, better circulation. So everybody knows they are in business. So a couple of things we need clarification on tonight. Your priority weight on the criteria, that consideration right there. Council would love your comments and feedback about how you would weight those if, if some of them weight more heavily than others, or they should all be weighted equally.
We have council member Foreman.
Hi. Okay, I have two questions and they kind of relate to one another. And this might be putting the cart before the horse a little bit. But if this gets approved, when would the application process be? Is there a timeframe from start to finish?
So where we, where we are is, and we have Mr. Francisco on the line with us too. Mr. Francisco, assuming that the funding that we will use for this program does come from the GO bond, what do you believe our timetable looks like to get into the bond market and have proceeds available?
From the time of voter approval, I would think that we could be before council with bond issuance in about 45 days and close in about 60 days. So I'm going to say that money would be available in about 60 to 75 days.
Well, we have a period of when we're going to stop receiving applications. Because my second question would be, what if we only get people that apply and we only have to spend like four million? Then what? Like, how, how would that work?
If we were to close out the program at that $4 million level, as opposed to, to keeping it open for future applications, then we could use that remaining $1 million to pay down some bond proceeds.
Okay. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Your Honor, as it relates to that timetable, it probably is only a little bit behind where we might be. Once we confirm our access to those CARES Act dollars allocated to the city of Norman. So we've got a call with the governor's office tomorrow. Hopefully, we're able to flesh out a little more of those CARES Act dollars being accessed. But it is fascinating that the timetables for both the Go Norman 2020 question and the recent realization that we might be able to access those CARES Act dollars. I am so happy we were on this path that, you know, we didn't waste a step. We didn't waste any time because whichever of those two funding opportunities presents itself, this document will put us in good shape to help get those dollars out into the business community in the most effective way possible.
Okay, so just for clarification, I guess, but we would still collect the 5 million, but then move the proceeds towards one of the other bonds?
So the way this ordinance was written, and, and I think Catherine's on the line, she can confirm this for us. The goal was to ensure that, to provide some taxpayer protection. In the event we were able to access either federal or state dollars to solve this issue, we would not be able to issue this $5 million in bonds. Catherine, do I have that framed correctly?
That is correct. That's something that was added to the ordinance at council's request so that we weren't asking for a property tax increase when we were getting federal funds that would accomplish the same purpose.
Okay.
Catherine, this is Chuck. Can you just read that language? It reads very clearly. It would be easy to understand if you could just read it.
Sure. It says proceeds of the Economic and Community Development Bonds may be expended with or without participation by other economic and community development agencies and entities. But to the extent federal funding is awarded to the city for similar economic and community development purposes, such federal funding will offset the authorization set forth herein.
Councilmember Hall.
Okay, my first, my first question was to go back to the priority considerations. Because I know we talked about that last bullet point right at the end of our meeting last round. And you did touch on it briefly, Mr. Pyle. But I, I thought we were going to strike the highest priority will be given to and just start with entity. And I'm, you know, I just want to make sure we clarify that, that it seemed to be the consensus that we didn't want that to have.
More all the way.
Yeah.
Agreed. And Madam Clerk, I don't know if you can strike that while we're here. I don't know if this is in PDF form or if this is in Word on your side.
And, you know, invite my fellow council members to weigh in, but that was my understanding of how we left it.
I think we did have consensus on that, on that sentiment.
Okay, I was just surprised to see that there still. And then my other question was, I know there's still some uncertainty as far as the CARES Act funding. And I think the number that we were tossing about last week was 9.5 million. Was that correct?
9.6, yes, Your Honor.
9.6. So is that the entire, is that what we're expecting to be the entire amount that's going to come to the city of Norman? Or just what we're?
Can I jump in on that? Correct me if I'm wrong, City Manager Pyle. But that, we have to subtract the requests for reimbursement that we've already made and that have been improved, approved. While we have not received the actual check for those, it's actually that amount minus like $750,000. And we're not going to get a lump sum check of the, the $9.6 million, which would be much preferred because it will be very hard, I would say nearly impossible, to calculate an exact dollar amount for all of the revenue we have missed from all of the events that were canceled and businesses that were closed. And I think that's the issue that I'm having with their generous support, is it has to be in expenditure, not just loss. And that is the difficulty. So if we don't have receipts for expenses made due to COVID-19 that qualify, which I should clarify, there will be no reimbursement. And I'm hoping we'll have a, a development as of this meeting that I will also be sitting in on tomorrow. But yes, City Manager Pyle, please correct me if I'm wrong in my understanding of these issues.
That is the way we believe when they said 9.6 million allocated to the city of Norman. There were reimbursement requests in process. So we think we'll get a net remaining allocation. And in that conversation, since this, this small business recovery discussion was initially identified at $5 million, that of the remaining balance of whatever that 9.6 may net, if there are other local programs that are COVID-19 related, council can allocate a portion of that remaining balance to other programs. So it could be in buying equipment to provide more outdoor space to offset the lost capacity in some of our indoor facilities. We think those would be eligible expenses, as well as an opportunity, and we'll clarify this tomorrow on the phone, for rental assistance or mortgage assistance. We may be able to fund additional support in those arenas with our remaining balance.
Okay, I guess that was what I was trying to figure out, which sounds like it'll become much more clear after the meeting tomorrow. But were we intending to use the entire balance towards the small business recovery? Or were there other remaining needs that we would be looking at that amount for as well?
So we do see some remaining needs, but it's always council's final call, how those dollars are allocated locally.
Okay, thank you. I'll be looking forward to seeing what you learn tomorrow because I know it's a moving target right now.
Mayor Clark.
Thank you. Even with the CARES funding, we know that there have been holes in it where some of our entities, be it entrepreneurs or businesses that are not federally recognized, have not been able to receive aid. So I would think that one of the categories that would get the most points, if you will, is organizations that were not eligible or denied other sources of funds. And then personally, I had to make some very tough decisions in March and April. I think the next one would be organizations that had restrictions on capacity. I would edit that to say, or closed during the City of Norman Healthier At Home Plan or future local ordinance.
We are making those notes. And yeah, both are easily directly attributable to the pandemic. And obviously, those were both issues brought upon them by actions outside their control for sure. So depending on council's consensus, the ability to weight those two more heavily than the balance of the priority considerations, we can make that so in our matrix to assign weight.
I just, here, give me, give me that. Go get Neil. Sorry, it got called on me literally right as Elliot was walking in the door. So I have, I have a few points. And I'll kind of start with the most recent one that just came into my brain because it's the one that Mayor Clark mentioned. I'll be really interested to see the weighting of the priority considerations because I felt similarly to Councilmember Hall that I didn't think that necessarily the highest priority overall should be given to entities that demonstrate the greatest negative financial impact. But of those prior bullet points, the ones that have demonstrated the greatest negative financial impact would get priority. So, you know, of those other one, two, three, four, five bullet points, if you meet one of those, let's say we get a whole wave of minority-owned entities applying for this. Of those minority-owned entities, the ones with the greatest negative financial impact would be given priority. Not that this one, that one point would be given priority over all the others. And while I, I, I understand where Mayor Clark is, is coming from, I, I do hesitate to put those particular bullet points that she mentioned ahead of any others because, you know, I think we're all aware that generally, maybe not with a few of our local financial institutions, but generally minority-owned entities and organizations in lower income census block groups tend to be lower on the priority scale for aid. And so I hesitate to, you know, to put any of these kind of above the other. But I'd be interested to kind of see what the, what the EDAB committee came up with for an initial start before I, before I feel any given way about that. I, I have a question. I believe it was Councilmember Patron who at the last meeting floated the idea of a phased approach for this. So the first phase would be, you know, the smallest businesses or those who fit specifically within those priority considerations and then roll out a second phase of money. I did not get a chance to watch the EDAB meeting from Thursday. So I don't know if that was discussed at all, or if there was any particular reason why, you know, why a, a plan didn't come out for that. I assume that if not, there was a reason.
So, Your Honor, a couple of thoughts related to your discussion on the priority consideration. The way you kind of describe it, that last bullet, that would be the tiebreaker. If, if you had several that met the same criteria, then the one that decides who's, who makes the cut and who doesn't would be those that have demonstrated the greatest negative financial impact. So I think that, that models pretty well. The conversation we had about Phase One and Phase Two, and, and I'll let Mr. Thompson correct my recollection. There is support for the concept, not knowing what the appetite will be for Round One. To start out, up to, we went from 250 down to 125. It's a possibility that you could be fully subscribed at that lower level, at the 125 and the 25,000 in the, in the second program. If we are not fully subscribed, we can absolutely come back and say, Council, we have X dollars left over. And what would you like to lift that number up to? But it's entirely possible it's all gone under these first set of criteria.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that. And so then, kind of to that, to that point, were you still looking at a similar breakdown in the amount of money for each of these categories? Two million for the revolving loan, one and a half million for the small business loan, and then 1 million for the We Love Norman grant?
Um, I think our initial take was 3 million for the first, 1 million for the second, and then 500,000 for each of the remaining two. That was the initial take, but that number, that, that allocation can be anything council deems most appropriate.
Okay, maybe, maybe that was my wish list then for what I, for what I was hoping for. Because even under those, we'll, I'll just go with my numbers. That's what I did the calculations on. If we did two, one and a half, and one with the 125, 25, and 10 that we have listed here to include, so I just, I want to think about it as what is the potential for this to happen? So if, let's say, all applications come in for 125,000, even ones that meet that priority consideration, that means only 40 businesses could potentially be served under that revolving loan, 60 for the small business loan, and then 100 businesses for the 1 million in recovery grants. And so I just think we have to, we have to always keep it in that kind of a frame because if we allow for this possibility, then we need to recognize what that possibility would lead to, which is a total of 200 businesses having access to a $5 billion economic recovery package. And if that's okay with council, that's okay with council. But I just think it's important to recognize that because I personally still have a little bit of, of heartburn with having, with having an upper limit of $125,000. Just because again, I think that my, my focus needs to be on how do we ensure that the smallest and least resourced businesses in this community have, and I would say, a disproportionate access to this type of program? Not how do we ensure that the, that the, the most possible businesses have access to it? And so I'm still, I'm still a little uncomfortable with 125,000 as the upper limit. But, you know, we'll see, we'll see what council has an appetite for. But I do think one thing that would make me feel more comfortable with that is if we considered, I don't know if EDAB considered this, annual revenue limits for these. So you're eligible for up to $125,000, but only if your business has revenue of less than, as an example, 750,000 a year. To really ensure that we're keeping it to the smallest possible businesses.
And, and to respond to that, this is Chuck Thompson, and that's a great point, is that you should not be able to receive more benefit than you suffered. And I think that's the, that's the formula limit, is that if you had a negative impact of X dollars, then that would be the limit of what you would be eligible for at the top end. And so doesn't really matter how big your business or gross revenues is, or how many employees you have, et cetera. But if you've suffered, you know, a loss as a result of these factors, then that would be the limit to, to what you could have. And I would like to throw out one thing because, because I know Councilmember Bearman, you, you've experienced this yourself. The applications, even though I think the community of Norman worked very hard to keep the applications simple and straightforward, I personally would recommend that the council consider putting, whether it's a part of this funding or volunteers or whatever. But, but the real factors to getting people to access this is that they feel comfortable in going through the process to fill out the application. Many, you know, very small businesses just don't have the, have the staff or the time or the capacity to, to make the application. And so I'm hoping that we put together, you know, some sort of a handholding or some sort of a process where we have outreach. You mentioned in one of the previous calls that you knew of quite a few small businesses that were, didn't, you know, didn't have access, didn't have time, couldn't, couldn't get there. And so they weren't served. And so we want to really work hard as a community to make sure that we provide the, 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 the resources to help those people apply when they might think it's just too hard. And I might not get, I might not be eligible, so I'm not going to spend the time. So I think that's where we could really put some focus to make sure that we get, we get to the smallest of people and the most need.
I agree. And I would love to see that first point that you mentioned about you can't receive more than your damage was or your loss was reflected somewhere in here. So because that's something that I may not remember when it comes, when it comes to review this for final approval. So even if that's just in the staff report for council members, I think that would be good to include. And so my last, my last point or question was, my ears perked up when, when I heard that there was possibly going to be some remaining funds in the federal money that's given to us that could be used for other expenses that could help benefit businesses in the time of COVID. Because one of the things that Councilmember Holman has been working on, that I think is a fantastic idea, is some sort of temporary permitting process for particularly restaurants to designate several of their parking spaces to use for. to use for outdoor seating. And I would love to see if there was a possibility to use some of this funding for the necessary protective equipment, like those concrete blocks or things that can, that can help make patrons feel comfortable sitting outside being so close to vehicles. I feel like orange construction cones probably aren't going to cut it. A little more secure and stable to really allow those businesses to promote safe outdoor seating when we can move through this process, because I have a feeling that we're going to be in this for a while. So I hope that we can move forward with Councilmember Holman's idea in relatively quick fashion and possibly use some of this federal funding to allow the city to utilize some of that to assist businesses in adopting that. So that's, that's my hope and my pitch on that. I think that that would make it much more likely that businesses would take up this opportunity if given to them. And that's all I've got for now. Thank you.
So, Your Honor, we will have that conversation on K-Rail is what they call those big concrete barricades. They also make a product. It's out of very heavy plastic and they can be orange and a little easier to see than, than the concrete. Then they fill them up full of water and it will definitely slow your car down at 25 miles an hour. So we'll confirm that our conversation with the governor's office tomorrow that that would be an eligible reimbursable expense. And the one thought I have with Mr. Francisco is to begin to calculate cash flow in terms of the city's ability to write those checks upfront and then submit them for reimbursement. And where Mr. Francisco's comfort level is to float potentially up to, you know, let's say there's eight and a half million dollars net. What does our ability look like to advance several of those projects at once?
Councilmember Patron. Okay, I've tried to take some notes of a few different questions. And so I might be kind of bouncing around throughout the document a little bit, but first I'm going to start with my fifth question, and that was, Mr. Thompson, can you tell us which types of organizations were left out other than the cannabis? I understand that from Oklahoma law, but what types of organizations were typically left out of federal funding?
Actually, a lot of the, 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 I'm going to say the paycheck protection program is the program I'm the most familiar with. And that, that restricted several different kinds of, of 501(c)(6), 501(c)(11). There were a number of different corporate structures that were omitted. And so those, and that, those would include, for example, Visit Norman, the Convention and Visitors Bureau is a 501(c)(6), so they weren't allowed to apply. There were businesses that were franchises that eventually were allowed. So if you were, if you owned, if you were a local business owner, but you were a part of a franchise, you were not allowed to, to, or you could apply, but you were not eligible. And then there were a lot of businesses that had other kinds of needs, but the paycheck protection program, excuse me, really was strictly related to losses, you know, to continued payroll. So technically, the paycheck protection program was less for the business and more for the employees. And so it wasn't really the loss to the business. It was money flowing through the business to keep the paychecks going. And so that's the primary focus of the paycheck protection plan. And then the EIDL SBA program really was solely based on losses of revenue. And so there were businesses that suffered in different ways, but were able to continue on in their business. And so, so there's not a clear path. I'd say that was the biggest thought process in the committee's discussions were that trying to see in the future to applicants that we may or may not know about or may or may not understand. So the committee's thought was to create as broad an application eligibility as possible. And then have a panel of underwriters that, you know, that are familiar with these kinds of applications that could then look at those businesses that were impacted in the way that the council is looking at. So we tried to, like Councilmember Bearman said, we tried to look at the broadest possibility of applicants and not just necessarily the smallest or the worst impacted because we don't really know who will be out there and who will apply, but we wanted to try to cast the net as wide as possible and then determine eligibility after we start seeing what kind of applications we get.
Okay, thank you. So that.
Wait, quick question. Mr. Thompson, wasn't the startups, there were startups that were ineligible for funding as well? I want to make sure that one's not left out.
Correct. Yeah, you had to be in business before, I think, a February date in the PPP program. And, and so we're, this particular, that's been a big part of the dialogue of the committee is to make sure that, that those people that were starting businesses during that time were also included in the local, local, locally owned and locally managed business definition.
Okay, and the 501(c)(6) and 501(c)(11) are either of those about lobbying or political advocacy? I don't think it's just all advocacy. I think the problem here is political advocacy. So is that the, the federal government banned that as well, correct?
Well, they, yeah, the, the federal government just, just operated on the, the tax designation and not necessarily on the nature of the business. And so I think what, what we're saying is that the application based on if the council says that they don't want to prohibit organizations that advocate. You know, there are 501(c)(3) not-for-profits, tax-exempt organizations that are considered charitable organizations were permitted under the, under the PPP program. But other kinds of organizations weren't. So I, my understanding from the council's dialogue so far has been that if it's a not-for-profit or charitable organization that's involved in advocacy, then that might be something that might be considered, but, but an organization that's involved in political fundraiser, or political lobbying or things like that would be prohibited. And so we probably need to work through some language that would get the council comfortable that we, that we would do what you want to do and we wouldn't do what you don't want to do.
Okay. On the first one, the, let's see, the, my first question, not the first bullet point, but We Love Norman Recovery Grant, including hotel motel tax, is that is that just an intentional plug for Visit Norman and Norman Arts Council, or is there other organizations I'm unaware of that that applies to?
I'm, I know that in the very beginning in a conversation with the mayor and City Council, EDAB, we did have a conversation about the fact that, that those organizations, especially Visit Norman, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, were, were left out of the, any other programs. And so I do, I do say that yes, the Norman Arts Council and Visit Norman are the organizations that are being, would be influenced or impacted by that. Personally, me, I'm not aware of other, the other 25% of the hotel motel tax money that comes in goes to the Norman parks. And I'm not sure exactly how that money works. Maybe City Manager or someone could talk about that, but I'm not aware of others besides Visit Norman or the Norman Arts Council.
And Your Honor, the Arts Council, they wind up supporting a couple dozen other smaller entities through their funding. So, you know, you identify one potentially here, but it could, you know, make its way through their normal distribution channels and support an additional dozen or two other local nonprofits.
Well, I mean, they're, they qualify on their own though, without bringing up hotel motel. I, I was just trying to make sure that I wasn't not, that I was understanding this, that it, and it's okay to say yes. It, it seems like the answer is yes, because they could stand on their own two feet without hotel motel tax and still be falling under the We Love Norman Recovery Grant as an NPO.
I just think City Manager points out a good, makes a good point there that, that the Norman Arts Council is a granting organization. So by providing funds for Norman Arts Council, their likely intention for a lot of that money is to go ahead and fulfill the grants that have already been, have been approved by their, by their programs. And so the money would flow, you would assume that the money would flow through the Norman Arts Council to their grant, to the organizations for whom they provide grants. And so that money would, would go through that process.
Right, but wouldn't they need, if I'm understanding these bullet points correctly, wouldn't they encourage them to apply on their own because they're limited to $10,000 as the Norman Arts Council? Whereas these other ones might have been getting $35,000 as just one entity through the city of Norman. Do you see what I'm saying? Other than this $10,000? Probably, hey, each of you apply.
Correct.
Okay.
What we don't want is anybody to double dip the system that way.
Well, obviously, yeah. So the Norman Arts Council would probably be taking a, a certain amount or Visit Norman or whatever up to $10,000 that they couldn't distribute to, to one of the other organizations via double dipping, as you'd say, but they could likely get more than trying to divvy up $10,000 between 13 different organizations. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that part. So on that note, Mr. City Manager, this last one, technical assistance and training programs, it is the only one for, that you can have, you can apply for that element as well as another package, correct?
That was our initial take. And, and of course, that was just a, a staff stab at it with EDAB's participation. And if, if, if that is your will, great. And if council has a different concept and it's one program only, that's fine too. So.
I'm actually very supportive of the retraining or technical assistance or whatever. I liked Councilmember Holman's idea with that. Because who knows if your pre-COVID business is now obsolete. And if that's the case, then you, you need some retraining. And I think that that's really important that we're able to do that. However, I don't see a, a cap on it. So I don't, what I don't want to do is buy a whole new computer system or one small business, you know, one medium sized business or whatever, and then we're out of any, any funds for training because we have no cap on the technical assistance or whatever.
So, Your Honor, I, I don't know if there's a number that, that provides comfort when you think about potential scholarships that would allow you to get certification, you know, and maybe it's a more Norman Technology Center training program that my business doesn't exist anymore, so I want to go get a certificate to be a dental hygienist or something like that. If that is, if, if we think, you know, a $10,000 per applicant dollar amount is adequate or appropriate, your, your input into what that limit should be, and it can be an up to, so that if somebody only needs a $3,000 certification program, that would be all that, you know, they would, they would go get. But, you know, up to that upper amount, if there's a number that feels comfortable for council, we'll include it right now.
I would encourage that it's on those types of things that it's payable to the institution or whatever program that they're joining and not to the individual. And I would leave that up to EDAB to discuss. I don't know if they, you know, we probably can't do four-year degree programs, but we can certainly do some VOTEC and maybe the city can form a partnership to where if it's under this program that there's, I don't know, some, somehow reduced tuition or something like that, since they're getting it paid right up front from the city. I don't know. I, I would just like to see that fleshed out a little bit better from, if you all can have that conversation and how that might work. And I, I think 10,000 is probably a little high. I would probably say five. If you're going with VOTEC stuff, because I think you could go to VOTEC for two years for five grand. But maybe I'm wrong. So I would just encourage to look into that to understand it better. Mr. Francisco, I still didn't understand the payoff, the other bond proceeds that Councilmember Foreman was talking about. Can you, are you saying that if we only spent 4 million, there was an extra million that it could go to pay off a completely different bond program?
No, no. What I was suggesting, and this is always the case in general obligation bonds, the proceeds can be used to pay the debt service. So basically, if we're this $5 million bond, we're paying $250,000 a year for 20 years, and we have a million dollars left over, then we can pay four years worth of debt service and not raise property taxes for those four years.
Okay, good. Yeah, okay, on its own AM schedule is what you're saying to bump it up.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I like that. Okay. I, I do feel like we probably need to have that conversation about the political organizations and I, I just, I feel this is one of the sticking points for me. I do feel very strongly that it's not appropriate for people's tax money to go towards to groups that are, whether, I don't care if it's on the right or the left, it doesn't make any difference to me. It shouldn't, that pool of dollars, in my opinion, should not be going towards to an organization who is known for lobbying or known for backing candidates or, or parties. It, it's just, on a lot of levels, it's disturbing to me. So I just would really hope that, to hear from other council members on that as well. Because I feel like it's just not the right source of public dollars. We'll echo Councilmember, Councilmember Kate Bearman. Didn't take that note here, but let's, I'm also uncomfortable with going all the way up to 125, but more than that, I think it's the 50 employees that has me a little bit. That's a big, that's a bigger outfit. I do notice that there are some restaurants that can get there, but and still maintain that small business feel or local feel or whatever, but I think they're eligible for federal money at that point. This to me, I would say 25 would be more the cap, and then you're not going to hit that 125 is like, it's not going to be as likely that you would hit that 125. So maybe 25 and 75,000, that would be what I would float. But I really, really appreciate all the work that you all have done on this and I'm going to pass the floor. Listen to the rest of the discussion.
Madam Clerk, might it be possible in the Zoom world to identify council consensus on that topic of the maximum number of employees to qualify for any of the programs? What's on the table is 50 employees or less, a proposal to make that 25 employees. If there is a mechanism for us to gain consensus, we can make that change before the final draft is before you next Tuesday night.
We would just need to hear from them as they bring their comments forward and we can see, you know, by the number of comments where the consensus lie. Councilmember Holman, be next.
Okay, okay, see. So I, 100,000, 125,000, I would probably support lowering that too. I'd be okay with 100,000. I wouldn't mind going a little bit lower if it was 75, as Counselor Patron suggested. I would feel okay with 100 being the top. The 50 number of employees, I'm not entirely sure what the threshold for employees might be for federal funding if it was 50 and above or something like that. For some types of federal funding perhaps. I know some smaller businesses than that have gotten federal funding. And I know there are some locally owned businesses in Normans, a couple grocery stores that I could think of that probably that have more than 50 employees that maybe they could, you know, have a valid reason for qualifying for this local funding. I'm not sure about their ability to get federal funding. I would assume a big grocery store might be able to, but so I was kind of thinking about those. I was just trying to think of large locally owned businesses in Norman. And so I was thinking about like Homeland and a few other places, but I would say most locally owned businesses in But I would say most locally owned businesses in Norman probably have less than 50 employees. So maybe continue to have some consideration about that. The highest priority part, I agree with Councilmember Bierman that that it more of like you meet all these criteria. And then the highest priority, if you meet all of these, and how do we do a tiebreaker or something like that? But I agree with her comments specifically about that, that part that I did not want it to override the other criteria as a reason why somebody would get it. But maybe in addition to, if you meet all the other criteria and you have the highest burden or you're a minority owned business and you have the highest financial burden, you know, that type of thing. I would want to make sure when it comes to discussions about, well, one I do want to mention, just to be clear, is like payday lenders. I think someone mentioned that at our last meeting that we did not want funds going to businesses like that.
No.
And then when it comes to franchises, I get, I get Chuck Thompson's comments about that, that a corporate chain business, a local branch of it could be owned by a local person and is not owned by the corporate entity. So I could get that where that local person with their store that's in Norman could need assistance. But I I would have a lot of heartburn at the idea of, you know, McDonald's or Sonic or Taco Bell, you know, getting these type of funds. I do understand that a couple of the McDonald's in Norman, maybe all of them, are are franchises and are not owned by the corporate company. But but when you see a bunch of those everywhere and everybody knows that brand, and I would assume that a McDonald's franchisee or franchise would be able to qualify for federal assistance. Maybe, I don't know how easily I hit say easily, but probably easier than a lot of businesses that are not connected to a corporate brand name. So I would be okay with a business like, you know, classic 50s, locally owned. It's the only one that exists in the world that I know of. And to me, it might be harder for them to get that federal funding or know how to apply for it than than other more corporate sponsored type businesses. And then technical assistance, I agree, probably 10,000 is maybe too much. We're talking about more Norman Tech Center. And I do agree that the payments for that should go directly to the entity that they'd be attending. And I mean, I would guess, yeah, somewhere between 2 and $5,000 would probably be enough to cover more than, probably, I would say, more Norman. $5,000 would easily cover a year or more of classes there. But it's been a while since I've been out there for a class, so I'm not entirely sure. But but I would think, you know, the the number I had in my mind was like $2,000. And I felt like $2,000 scholarship to more Norman could help. One, it would make that amount we have go a lot farther. We could help a lot more people get in there. And that should, maybe it doesn't cover 100% of the cost. And I'm not opposed to covering 100% of the cost. But maybe it doesn't cover all of it, maybe it covers most of it or half of it or whatever the situation might be. But I think people would, you know, probably appreciate any help they could get if they're starting at zero. So and I just agree with the overall sentiment that we want to try to make this, these funds help the most people as possible. That maybe they can't fix your entire problem. Maybe they can't do everything, but maybe they can help get you out a little bit or give you some room to move. So I do want to make sure that it's not all being consumed by a few who may have valid needs for it, but that we're making sure that it's stretching across to, you know, as many people as possible. And and I, too, you know, 200 potential businesses, you know, that could be a lot. I'm not sure. 200 small businesses in Norman potentially being helped by this, I think, is a pretty good, is a pretty significant part or gesture. Would have a pretty significant impact on the local community and economy on our part. But I would definitely be interested to hear more about, you know, what what would be a good number to shoot for? How many small businesses like this are there in Norman? Is it several thousands, is it, you know, hundreds, that type of thing? So I think, the lobbying versus advocacy part is a little bit difficult, I agree. Because a lot of groups, especially nonprofits, may lobby as in they ask elected officials to support them or allocate funding to them, things like that. So I find it a little bit difficult to just say no right across, you know, just flat out across the board there, given those considerations. But I do agree that I don't, I do think it is inappropriate for these funds to be used to campaign for any kind of political proposition or candidates, things like that. And we'd want to make sure that any groups, yeah, that are applying for this are using it for services, for program or for their business to exist as a business. So so those are my thoughts on the on this so far. And then I think we've come a pretty, pretty long way on it and have made some real progress on clarifying what exactly we want this to be used for and how it will be used. I know we've all been getting questions from people that are waiting, cast their vote on it to have some more detailed information. So I'm hopeful, hopeful that we'll be able to provide that for them. So thank you.
Councilmember Peacock.
Thanks, yeah. So I I agree with the cap mentioned. I'd be okay with 100K. I think that's a good compromise there. I agree with Councilmember Holman and Patron's comments in regard to the political lobbying versus nonprofit advocacy. Definitely need to make a distinction there. I I agree with Councilmembers Holman's last comments about stretching the dollars. I thought that was really important, because if you actually look at the Labor Force Report, you'll see that 82% of the businesses in Norman are nine employees or less. So that is going to be a significant portion of our applicants. And, you know, I'd love to see that second bullet point, that second category there, 10 employees or less. I'd love to see that have the most support in terms of dollars. Kind of along those lines, Mr. Thompson, can you, can you speak real quick to that startup category and how we would be qualifying those?
I don't know that that we've developed the details about that at this point in time. And Sidney Manjre might have some more thoughts there. But most of, you're talking about the number of small businesses. The largest number of small businesses in Norman are sole, sole workers. And so, but that includes a lot of cosmetics, home health, individual, which are lots and lots of individuals that are, that have home based businesses. And so in our bank examinations, the FDIC looks at how well banks serve the entire business community. And so in the last Dun and Bradstreet report, there were 3,000 individual businesses in Norman with one employee. And so that that's just an overwhelmingly large number. And and how you would decide which of those, and you can kind of go through those in your own mind, I think. And so I think looking at how those have been impacted, you know, and back to the Councilmember Bierman's comment about helping them apply or even know that the money is available, that those are some challenges, I think, that we seem to be able to address. But but the startups, I would say those are in two categories. So you have formal startups that are a part of some sort of incubator or some sort of program like related to the Economic Development Coalition, University of Oklahoma. You know, there are lots of programs in the market that, and in three, more than one Technology Center, that support startups. And then there are people that are, you know, like Apple Computers that are starting up in their garage. And you've got, you've got that kind of startup. And so, again, the, I think the instructions that EDAB that we thought we got was, could you put together some thoughts that would put the largest possible applicant pool together so that we could have the best chance of not having missed someone that wasn't eligible or fell through the cracks some other way? And I can hear now that the council might be more thinking about, well, we really want more bang for the buck. Or we want to look at a little bit more tailored than just coming up with a program that would, that would be open the door for as many as possible, which is certainly just a, you know, council prerogative. And we can deal with, you know, whatever your preferences are. But but I do think that there are some definitions that that will be important to bring forward. Certainly the difference between advocacy in a not for profit and then, you know, what we would consider formal lobbying. I mean, I think we could define that out pretty well. And then looking at, you know, are you, are you a startup in some sort of a formal program? And, you know, do you have something that you're working through some process? Or are you an individual that's got a, you're an inventor and you, you're trying to get a product to market or an idea, you know, patented in some way? And so, so there's a lot of that out there and figuring out how to best address that, I think, would take a little bit of work.
And, Your Honor, one of the thoughts, Councilmember Peacock, in that category, the two control rods council can put in the document are, one, how much money would you like to allocate to the program in total? And then how much would you like to allocate for each potential applicant? To, you know, if there's an overwhelming number, then it would boil down to their ability in the criteria to identify how their business startup, you know, best impacts the community in a post-COVID environment. So control still lies in court.
Yeah, you know, that's good to hear. But I think my question is framed more in that, in that Apple garage inventor kind of sense and that, you know, I know we want to take care of our existing businesses first. But if there's extra monies left over, I'd love to be able to incentivize some people that maybe, you know, fell out of work due to COVID to go out there and, you know, take the risk in a risky time and try their hand at their own thing, cultivate some local stakeholders. I think that'd be a real positive, a win win. So I hate that phrase, but.
Well, I just would add this real quickly, that I think from a negative impact of COVID related, you know, some things that have happened there versus businesses that just are out looking for capital.
Right.
But we want to, I think this money, the designation we've been given or instructions we think we've been given is that, you know, we want to look at people that were negatively impacted by these certain circumstances and find ways to help them. But I do think, a whole separate idea, having a community capital investment fund is another idea for a different day, where if we have local entrepreneurs that do have some needs that, you know, a little bit of capital could help them out, COVID or not, that that's, that's worthwhile for our community to discuss.
Good. Thank you.
Councilmember Bierman.
So I feel a little bit like Mr. Thompson has been reading my diary lately. Don't steal my community capital idea, Mr. Thompson. I will not be pleased. I will say, I will say that I definitely prefer to see a revolving, well, whether it's a revolving loan amount or just a, whether we decide to do grants or not, closer to 75,000. And I do, I do think that we should shoot for a few, a reduced amount of employees. If you look at that Labor Force Report, 90% of employees are employed at a business, you know, that has 20 or fewer employees. So, you know, I think that that would, that would kind of narrow that focus. But again, kind of ensure a broader reach, because you'd have a lot more small businesses feeling more empowered to access this program. I think a lot, I think a lot of smaller businesses have been really dejected after their experience with the PPP and the EIDL. So I think, I think making it look more accessible by limiting the number of employees would be helpful. And just to give a frame of reference, the Wilson Company, of which I am an owner, has a total of 31 employees, pre, pre-COVID numbers, 31 employees. So, and I think it's perfectly, perfectly acceptable to eliminate us from this applicant pool. So I do think that one of the things that Mr. Thompson said was, how do, how do we ensure that businesses are aware of this program and help them apply for it? I think one of the things that we can do is be sure when we publicize this program that it is not a first come, first served program. There will be an application period in which everyone can submit their applications. And then an underwriting panel will go through and kind of assign them different weights. I think that would be very helpful, because again, I think, I think a lot of businesses have a little bit of PTSD from the mad rush to access the PPP before it was completely wiped out. And frankly, we saw that with the questions that I received about the CDBG Rent and Utilities Assistance Fund. The first and most pressing question I got was, how fast do I have to apply? How soon will the money be gone? And so I think making sure that businesses know that if we do ask for things like, you know, annual revenue limits, that this gives them time to either sit down with QuickBooks themselves or get in touch with their accountant and get any documentation that is needed for it. I think that'll eliminate a lot of the angst about whether or not they apply for the program. And for that underwriting panel, that was actually a question I meant to ask earlier, and then I neglected to ask it. I do see the benefit of wherever, however, we structure this panel of having underwriters who are seasoned at this type of application processing. However, I would also like to put out there that I would love to see even some lay representation from, you know, marginalized communities, as an example. I had a long conversation with Jeff Hughes at Progressive Independence today. And that was something he pointed out, that he said, you know, I'd be happy to serve on this kind of, on this kind of panel just to ensure that, you know, we have some of that, you know, kind of down and dirty, you know, I'm on the ground going to these businesses, I talk to them all the time, kind of, kind of experience, and not just people who, you know, I don't want to say sequestered behind the the glass at the bank, but, you know, to have, to have some people who, you know, can kind of speak to the community aspect of this as well. So I wanted to put that out there. And for the technical assistance program, I don't know if anyone actually mentioned this directly, but I would love to see this program not be aimed at businesses, but actually be aimed at individuals and have it be intended for individuals who have either lost their job because they worked for a company that is obsolete or a sole proprietor whose business now is no longer feasible to them, instead of having it aimed at just businesses. So whether we're carving out separate, you know, funding in this for, you know, some retraining or job training or just changing the language of who is eligible for it. I would love to see that aimed at individuals as well, kind of along the lines of Councilmember Holman. You know, maybe we identify certain programs at More Norman Tech that we're willing to pay for or, you know, distance learning at OU, wherever we can kind of find these partnerships to direct it at individuals. And I would, I would say, regardless of where we go with the dollar amounts with our different tiers of funding, I would love to see that technical assistance limited to the two smaller programs. That, you know, whether we go with 75 or 100,000 or 125,000, I think if you're getting that much money, double dipping doesn't seem as helpful as it does with some of the smaller, some of the smaller grants or the smaller loans. And I think, I think 2,500 or 5,000 would be a perfectly acceptable limit for that as well. And so I think, did I answer all of the questions for feedback? 75,000 for the loan, 25 employees, technical assistance, that is at least partly a for their own, for their own retraining and their own recertification. And I think that's pretty much it. I just wanted to make sure that I touched on those.
And Mayor Clark.
I had so a couple of questions with the political organizations. What about firms that are consulting firms? You know, the nature of campaigning has changed. And so it's clearly political, but it's not necessarily lobbying. So I wanted to throw that out there, because that, you know, a lot of people have have tried to dive into that business. And I don't know how COVID-19 has treated them, given that it's the nature of just campaigning has changed. So that was something I wanted to throw out there just for fun. And then perhaps on the revolving loan, we could. And then perhaps on the revolving loan, we could compromise and go with 35, smaller, but still large enough to, to get the grocery stores and things that Councilwoman Holman was talking about. And I did spend some time flipping through the, the Spark magazine for More Norman and I'm telling you, if you've got some free time on your hands, they have everything on how to make a picture perfect charcuterie board to making memories and wood turning. So, good on them. But I don't think we should limit it just to training to people whose job has ended because jobs have evolved. Imagine how many people who would benefit from computer fundamentals now that they've had to move online or even a grant writing, which is a $115 class. You have, my husband's an electrician, so I fully support the, the career tech and the options that it provides to a skilled workforce. You have machining, that's $389 to welding, that's 519. So they are affordable, but there's also different levels of it. So I definitely support putting a cap on that. And I know that, I doubt we'll have time to get this together, but the More Norman specifically has short-term class discounts for things like veterans and full-time Norman Public Schools and more public schools employees. So as a, a good community partner, perhaps that's something we could talk to them about. But I definitely agree in fleshing it out a little bit more, making it clear that, you know, employees who, whose job has ended or they're startup and they're, you know, moving on. But again, the training available to the business as well. I think that's, that's still very important as we all try and adapt to whatever the new normal will look like after this pandemic because it will never be the way it was. And I'm confident there are a lack of, of these new skills, especially with our, our more experienced business owners that have been around a while. And so I don't want to limit it too much for that reason.
Councilmember Petron.
This is a flashback from the original E DAB meeting that I meant to bring this up last time that we ran out of time. And Mr. Thompson, you all were talking about real estate and people that own rental property. And that one was another that I was, I think we kind of, Councilmember Bearman hit on this one last week without being specific to it, but if you have an asset that you're able to pledge against, that's, you're in a far better position than what we're really speaking about for this program. I don't think people who buy a house and send their kids to school here for, for four years and they see that as a way to recoup or offset tuition essentially, their kid stays in the house and they have a couple of roommates and then you sell it after four years and you have equity, you're, you're starting off at a point that is oftentimes far out of reach or far in advance to people who haven't had the same kind of opportunity. And you still have that asset even if you have been, even if your son or daughter or whoever came home for the semester because the school closed and you did virtual learning through OU. So that one I've been thinking about quite a bit since that meeting and I would hope to at least have the council discuss that because I feel like it's not what we were looking at trying to achieve. And, I mean, I own real estate, I'm in real estate, so I'm not saying this, it's not even, it would be in my best interest to say, yeah, let's hook them up. But I don't think that this is about at all and I, I feel like that they have the asset to pledge against. So I would just like to hear from the other council members on that. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. And I would also say split the baby on the tuition maybe, maybe make it 3,500 since they need an amount. And consultants, no, sorry, I love you mayor, but no. To me, maybe they would want to sign up for one of the training programs, but we can't be, I'm just not comfortable with, with them putting our public dollars towards campaigning either, even though they are business owners, I get that, but it just doesn't feel right. So, I'm losing my voice, but I wanted to throw that out there about the real estate.
Councilmember Bearman.
Yeah, I'll, I can, I'll respond with my thoughts on that. I, I feel very similarly to Councilmember Petron, although I'm sympathetic to people who, you know, own rental properties and, you know, who have tenants who might be struggling to pay their rent due to their own COVID circumstances. Councilman Petron is right, they do still have a very substantial asset or assets if they have multiple houses that they rent. And while it may be a painful decision to have to borrow against it or to even sell it and go into another, another type of business, they have far more flexibility with that asset than someone who, let's say, has a retail store. They lease their property, they have a small amount of equipment as assets, but the majority of their assets is in the merchandise that they have to sell in order to keep their business running. And it's generally not the same volume or increase in value the way a home does. Retail merchandise doesn't appreciate the same way, just like cars don't appreciate the same way. And so while I am sympathetic to that, that situation to be in, I just don't know that that's really what this program is aimed at, whether it's someone who owns one rental property or someone who owns a dozen rental properties, that they, that that's just not really what we're, what we're aiming at here. And I think that 3,500 is perfectly appropriate because it seems like the classes at More Norman Tech are a lot more reasonable and accessible than I really thought. But I do know that if you're trying to get, you know, a breadth of experience, let's say, in dog grooming, it's a longer program. We have several former employees who have gone through it, but it, it takes time and it's, it's more than one class. So, you know, in order to get kind of a deep enough level of, of experience to put on a resume to get you a callback for a job interview, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna take a couple thousand dollars. And so I think, I think 3,500 is a appropriate for that. And Mayor Clark, I think, did you say 30, was it 30 or 35 employees? Is that what you were thinking? 35? Okay. And I would be, I would be comfortable with that, too.
Mayor Clark.
Well, Councilmember Petron, no, no love lost or jeopardized. I was just throwing that out there for, for conversation. I, I agree that, and I forgot to mention this earlier, that we put the scholarship funding directly to the entity. I think that's very, very, very important, being someone that works at a university. And I think if you did like a two-year associate program, it would be more expensive. But again, as you mentioned, there are many layers of training. One, I think, gets your foot in the door, but then you get certified in testing and higher levels and all that fun stuff. So, there was something else I was gonna add. I may have covered it, but I wanted to clarify that I, I want it to go to the entity for sure. So, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Hall.
Okay. Just gonna try to circle back around all the things that we've talked about as far as just consensus. So, on the proposed funding programs, I'm fine with, just talked about 50 down to 25. I'm fine if we raise that a little bit to 30 or 35. I do like reducing that dollar amount even more to anywhere between 75 and 100. I'm fine with that. And, let's see. On the technical assistance, yes, absolutely pay to the entity and I'm comfortable with that cap of 3,500. Let's see what else we had talked about. The other thing as far as the, the political, political lobbying versus political activity versus advocacy, I am wondering if the rest of the council members actually saw the clarification letter from Mr. Thompson because I just figured out that it's not attached to our agenda on our iPad, I don't think, but it was available on the city website. And so one of the things that was clarified with their concerns about eliminating completely the political activity or lobbying activity was that considering the advocacy piece, which some, you know, some entities may have, it specifically said that they wanted to make sure to modify that none of this money would be able to apply for any kind of advocacy efforts. So I think that was what came back. If you wanted to clarify that, Mr. Thompson, I think you, I think you did hear what we were saying and that you still felt like it was important to, I guess, widen the net and not exclude some of the entities that might be eliminated by that, but you also wanted to confirm that you were comfortable with not having any of those funds that would come from the recovery package, that they couldn't use any of that for advocacy efforts. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, the other programs that have, have had, have come forth have all had limitations. You can't use the money for these different kinds of things. And, and so I think that's completely reasonable to say, even though, you know, not lobbying and in the sense that we're talking about it, but maybe we would permit businesses that advocate for their own, you know, we talked about not-for-profits that would advocate for themselves, but that they would have to segregate the funds granted through this program and use those separately for the purposes that the council would intend and not for their advocacy. So, and I, and that's, that's been the case in a lot of the other programs as well. So having the, having the grant or the funding proceeds separately received by the company and segregated is a normal way that doing business in this fashion.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I think that's all I have for now.
Councilmember Bearman.
So, and I, I appreciate that explanation, Mr. Thompson. My concern with that is that, you know, you have organization ABC, they've got $500,000 a year that they typically do all of their activities with, maybe during COVID, they're only making 350,000 bringing in, they need that 150,000 in order to complete all of their activities, which includes lobbying. Without this funding, they won't be able to do any of that, but with this funding, they're able to put all the money into their operations that they need, even though that, that money that they get from the city is going into operations, it offsets money that they are then freed up and able to use for lobbying or advocacy purposes. And so I just don't, in my opinion and for my, for my comfort, I don't know that I can really square that circle well enough to feel comfortable even with the compartmentalization of the funding because while they may be able to put that money into their operations, that might free up other money that they have to do lobbying or advocacy work that they maybe otherwise wouldn't be able to in a COVID year. So I'm still not sure how comfortable I am with that, with that particular component, but I think it's hard to, it is hard to find the language to exclude the types of organizations that we would like to ensure don't have access to this money while also supporting the organizations that we do. So I don't know that there's a good answer to it, but I still, I still have some, some heartache with trying to, trying to use our city dollars in that way. So, I wish I had an answer to that other than I don't like it, but that's pretty much, pretty much all I have at that point. But I do, I do appreciate that explanation. I'm just, I'm just not sure if, if it, if I can really reconcile all of that kind of with my own concerns about it.
Well, maybe possible just to say, you know, you've got all these United Way Agency entities that have struggled with fundraising and the places they normally would receive funding. So think about the United, a United Way Agency. Nearly every one of them is doing advocacy for whatever their project is. I mean, they're, whether it's homeless or whether it's, you know, abused family, all those, everything you can think of. And so to the extent that I'm, I don't think that the council necessarily would want to prohibit those kind of organizations from seeking help in some fashion because they have employees there, you know, they may be not-for-profit businesses, but they are, they do have revenue sources, whether it's donations or otherwise, and then they provide services. And so, so figuring out a way to, and many of those are the neediest. I mean, they thinly staffed, the revenue streams are challenging for them these days. And so if the council wants to just eliminate, you know, access to all of those kinds of entities, then, then I think that's the council's prerogative. But, you know, the, what I think I hear or I've heard words about partisan politics or, or businesses that are involved in lobbying for things that would go to an election of some sort, or maybe we could find enough words or our committee could really get kind of to the bottom of what the council's concerns are, which are very reasonable in my opinion, and then say, and not these. And so then maybe rather than just talking around the fringes, we say, these are the, these are the, the kinds of activities that we do not. The timing of that technical pause, just for dramatic effect.
I did have one thought and I, now I feel bad because I was actually gonna ask Mr. Thompson if he knew this.
I want to use tax dollars to fund.
There he is. Came right back. He froze for a second. So we missed the last part of what you were saying, but I did have a thought. Do you know, do you know as an example, if the United Way, especially the local organization, has a registered lobbyist on staff?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not aware of that, but I, I'm not in a position to answer for that.
Well, that was, that was just my thought, is that one way to ensure that this money doesn't go towards activities or to organizations that are involved in the kinds of activities that we would like to keep city dollars from going to, is to identify maybe agencies that do not have a registered lobbyist on staff. If you have a registered lobbyist, you are directly obviously lobbying and asking for money or a legislative outcome at the, the local or the state level. To me, that's not a perfect delineator, but it is one that would make me feel a lot more comfortable than just saying, no, none of these agencies have access or all of these agencies have access. So, just a thought.
That's, that's a great idea.
Or do you hire lobbyists? I mean, they might prefer not to have that expense of having one on staff, but.
But those are all questions that the council could advise or recommend or state that you want these questions in the applications. And then the application typically is filled out under the penalty of perjury. So back to Councilmember Bearman's comments about the fungibility of money. Well, the money's in this pile, but not going to be used for that. And so most applications, the applicants make, they make representation and warranties to the granting organization that they will or won't do certain things. And so, you know, there'll have to be some sort of a follow-up to make sure that the applicants have used the money the way they've, we've directed or that's been directed for them and they follow the council's direction, council directives.
Okay, Mayor, I'm not seeing any other questions or comments.
All right. Well, I think we've continued to flesh out this important bond package and.
Thanks, Chuck.
Now, Mr. Thompson?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
And for anyone watching, I would encourage you to do your research and look into all four of the bonds in this package because it's very well-rounded. It meets a variety of the needs of our community and we have a real chance to invest in our community at a time that is very opportune to do so, again, without us feeling the, the financial impact personally as property owners until 2022. And I can't hammer that home enough. The timing, while on the surface may seem awkward or to some even inappropriate, it's actually quite convenient. And, and I'm very proud of this council for taking the initiative, put it out there and to give it to the voters. I hope that you visited the city of Norman website where there's lots of information about each one of these packets or the bonds within the package. And I know the mailers have gone out, lots of information, again, whatever you care about, whatever facet it may be, hopefully it's all four of these in the package, but there's something for you in it. And again, a great way to invest in our community. So once COVID-19 is passed, and someday it will be passed, we'll be in a better position than we were before. And I know that is sometimes difficult to imagine at this point, but it is possible. And so when you go vote on August 25th, bring your neighbors, call your friends and remind them that this is a very, very important election for the future of our community. And again, one that can get us in the best position for a strong recovery after a historic pandemic that I'm sure none of us thought or ever dreamed we would live through. So, Madam Clerk, with that, if there are no other comments or questions, this study session is adjourned. So, Madam Clerk, with that, if there are no other comments or questions, this study session is adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor.